Okay, welcome to the December 6th, 2022 Medfield Board of Selectmen's meeting. This meeting will be held in a hybrid format. The Board of Selectmen will attend in person and members of the public may attend in person. We have a number of people in the audience tonight. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by joining. If you go to the town website, download the Board of Selectmen meeting agenda, you will find a link that you can click on to join in through a Zoom link there. The packet of materials is also available on the town website. For the people here in the audience, if you do speak, we'd ask you to pick up either come to the podium, which actually is the preferred place from the people who tune in. They say the audio is better if you use that microphone. But if it's a discussion, you have a brief comment, then the honorary Bill Massaro microphone is undoubtedly somewhere back in there. That there's a hand mic that is here in the room because Bill is here there and he has his hands on the Bill Massaro microphone. So use that if you are talking from your seat. Just as a disclosure to everyone, this is being video recorded and Medfield TV is streaming the meeting live and we always have the recordings available in our records. Right, okay. And I get a confirmation from Medfield TV that they are streaming it live. For a minute here, I'd like to take a moment to express our appreciation to service members who are protecting our country here and abroad. Thank you. Okay, we have two public hearings to start our agenda for tonight's meeting. So I will call the first public hearing to order. This is a public hearing regarding the renewal of the Verizon contract.
Cable license.
Say again?
Cable license.
It's a cable, which is a cable license and it's a five-year contract. Do I have to do anything else other than I thought I had that one right? Do we have anyone making a presentation to begin with? We do.
Sure, thank you. Bill Solomon, Special Counsel.
Special Counsel to the Town of Medfield.
Yes.
Not to Verizon.
Not to Verizon.
That's right, yes. Thank you. Sometimes I said sometimes it's hard to judge, but Bill Solomon, Special Cable Counsel for the town. I've worked on the town's cable licenses before and thank you for the opportunity. That includes two Comcast renewals and an initial Verizon license and the last Verizon renewal. And I do recognize two members of the board who've been here. Good to see you again and also I've met the new member today who is a lot braver than I would be here, being here today. So let me just give some background. As you know, Verizon initially had a 10-year license, 2008 to 2018, I believe. Yes, and then we had a five-year renewal with Verizon. A five-year renewal at that time, which is different than Comcast licenses, which are usually 10 years, the maximum allowed under the state law for renewal. Because Verizon sort of has one foot out the door. Their goal, they've told Wall Street five years ago, is to move on from cable, to do some sort of streaming video and not be a cable service. But as my mom used to say, born in 1917, sometimes people's eyes are bigger than their stomach. And so that's the dream of Verizon and I'm sure they'll get there, but it's a tougher thing to get because 5G is taking more time and it's a tough transition. And it's difficult when you have been successful and Verizon has been an excellent cable company and a successful cable company, it's hard to tell your customers that, hey, we're going to move on to something else. So they are still here and they're coming, they're licensing now and that's great and they're an important addition to have competition in the town of Medfield. So as the chair mentioned, that the proposed license would be a five-year license, same as the current license. However, it would have, and this has been in place really in licenses since 2000 and beginning of 2020, it would have a unilateral three-year termination they would have the right to. In exchange for that unilateral three-year termination, that the, they would be providing five years of PEG, Public Educational Government Capital Dollars, paying that five years within the three years. I believe that they'll fulfill their five years because as I said, I do think that they're a successful cable company and while they're not fighting as hard as they used to for cable customers, that they still provide an excellent service. So the purpose of today's hearing are a few. One is state regulation requires we have a public hearing before the Board would vote on the license. And Cable Act has a requirement for a public proceeding. So the idea here today is to hear from Medfield Community Television about what they do and so people can be even more familiar with Medfield Community Television. With the ad with COVID and the pandemic, what's been clear in Medfield and across the Commonwealth is that never has community television, public educational government access been more important. As folks say, and the similar to the headline of the Washington Post, but I've had members in other towns mention that democracy would have died in that town if it wasn't for community television helping the town get on the internet through video conferencing and having it on TV because otherwise the public would not have been able to be connected to the government and government to the public and also community groups and seeing your children's sports and a wide variety of things. And so when COVID came, it turned out that these folks were on the essential category. And so not only has it never been more important, but it's understood and recognized as being important because as you're doing here and will go forward, that folks have now gotten used to the idea of being able to be home and to participate, bad weather, age, whatever the children, whatever the issue may be. And that's something that's continuing so that the need and interest of access is stronger than ever. So tonight, I thought it would be helpful to hear from Medfield Community Television about where they are and where they're going, if the Board has any questions. That I am having a negotiation tomorrow with Verizon's attorney to go over the license draft that we've gone back and forth on. I think we'll be able to work out all issues tomorrow. The final issue is the PEG capital issue, which then we'll start negotiating. I have some thoughts on that. So from my perspective, I'd like to see this, the license documents and the final financial aspect completed in December. And that would mean, given the December calendar, it's unlikely we'd have another meeting by the Board, but you know, if we got it done soon enough, then I would speak with your staff and say, if you want to have a special meeting, but I anticipate it will be in January. But I'd like to have the full license completed here in December and I think that's a realistic goal for moving forward and tomorrow I think we'll get, we'll get 90% there. So with that said, I'll turn it back to the chair, be happy to answer any questions at the end and hear from Medfield Community Television about where they are and where they're going in the next five years.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
I'm happy to run this any way you guys would like us to, but it sounds like maybe it would make sense to hear from Medfield TV first and then, so we kind of hear everybody that has stuff to say and then we can open it up for discussion.
Yeah. Thank you. A little shorter than Bill. So hi, everybody. I'm Katie DuVall. I'm the Executive Director of Medfield TV and thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Over the last five years, Medfield TV has steadily grown from being an important piece in the fabric of the Medfield community into a necessary component of its function. Never before, as Bill said, has PEG media been more important to both the well-being of communities and local democracy than it is right now. Medfield TV is no exception. This organization has proven its resiliency and adaptability as challenges arise. When the state law changed to require the appropriation of PEG funding at town meeting, Medfield TV made the careful fiscal decision to operate on savings as is necessary so we can continue fulfilling our mission until funds can be transferred to us after town meeting each year. When the pandemic began, Medfield TV brought traditional in-person events to the virtual space for residents to enjoy while confined to their homes. We worked with local organizations to present recaps and live broadcasts of events such as Medfield Foundation's Angel Run, the St. Baldur's Day fundraiser, CAM's Holiday Stroll and MEMO's Tree Lighting. With our training, volunteer producers could continue creating their shows through Zoom. Regular Medfield High School events such as graduation and sports were also livestreamed so that friends and family never missed an important moment. Seeing a need to bring joy to the community during the pandemic, Medfield TV worked with our partners to develop new programs and initiatives. These included the Mental Health Monday Project, the Mic Page Doodle Club, the Halloween Drive-Thru and the Holiday Lights Drive-Thru. We also covered relevant events to the community such as the Black Lives Matter Solidarity Walk and the Medfield High School Rolling Rally. Traditional committee meetings received a makeover in March 2020 when open meeting law relaxed and physical distancing measures were established. We introduced a hybrid setup for school committee meetings and then perfected the setup for a Board of Selectmen by providing cleaner audio and video than could be accomplished with a computer alone. In addition, we provided cable and online distribution platforms for the Dale Street Building Committee, the Warrant Committee, local representative reports and Medfield TV-produced candidate discussions. Annual town meeting and special town meeting were also livestreamed to residents who could not make it in person. So now, as we look forward to the future, we will provide space for the community to convey their ideas, share information and expand their knowledge. We will continue to help democracy run by providing transparent access to local government meeting coverage, especially as a legislative requirement for hybrid meeting access is under consideration. We will also become a hub for budding videographers and filmmakers, particularly among our younger community. To do this, we've developed a close relationship with the school art department and we are creating new classes and initiatives for organizations, with organizations such as Medfield Outreach. We want to continue being mentors to young digital artists and provide them with opportunities to gain real-world skills in emerging technology while also giving back to the community. During this ascertainment process, I hope that you will keep Medfield at the, Medfield TV at the forefront of your minds so that we can continue to grow and provide opportunities for our community throughout the next five years. I look forward to providing any additional information that you need and thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm David Maxson. I'm a Red, Medfield resident and President of the Board of Directors of Medfield TV, formerly known as, formerly known as Medfield Community Cable Access Corporation. You can see why we call ourselves Medfield TV. I just want to say that, you know, Medfield has such a wonderful environment, positive attitudes, generosity and just a number of characteristics that enable us to hire talent like Katie DuVall. She has got a breadth of experience and some super ideas for moving Medfield TV forward and doing even more for the community than we've been able to do in the past. And I also just want to do a shout out to my colleague and friend, Bill Solomon, the greatest cable TV franchise negotiator in the known universe. And I've worked with him on wireless matters as well, so we know each other pretty well. And yes, we'll be happy to receive the bill and pay for it out of the funds that we get from Verizon. So that'll be all taken care of. And just as a Medfield resident, I encourage you to approve the franchise that Bill ultimately negotiates. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I guess we'll start by asking questions, comments, anything?
Well, you know, I love the fact, Katie, that you reviewed all the things that you did because I was like, you know what, that's right, they did this, they did this all throughout COVID. It did bring the community together and it makes me think of, as we've talked about Medfield 101 and educating, is that something that we'll leverage with the TV station so that? Okay, because I think it would be phenomenal as we start talking about all the different roles and when, and I think of like the seniors as they're heading off to college, if they learn more about the different roles, the head of the departments, that'll be great if that's actually on Medfield Cable. But yeah, I think you guys do a fantastic job. We have our partner in crime in the corner who crushes at every selectman's meeting. So thank you very much.
I'm curious, Bill, you said that Verizon is looking to cease being a cable company and become a streaming company. How is that different? I don't, I guess I don't know what that means.
Sure, no, no, great question and we'll see. Now, as I said, for now, they're renewing and you know, they haven't told anyone, customers or anyone else, that they're leaving, but they've told that to Wall Street. And the reason they want the shorter license is so they have flexibility. So when Verizon first came, they had to decide, did they believe they were a cable system providing cable service? In other areas of the country, AT&amp;T decided they weren't. But Verizon, to its great credit, understood that the service it was providing was cable service under the Cable Act, providing set programming to subscribers, not having people pick programming by clicking and deciding what to watch, but rather offering a course of different tiers and levels of programming. And that would be cable service under, under the Cable Act. So that going forward, you know, what they're thinking about is not providing tiers of service and of different programming, but rather in a sense, being an internet provider where someone would, would, would click on to what they want to watch. Now, there, whether or not, if they go to that different paradigm, the question that we and others throughout the country will have is, well, are they really just providing cable service by another name? Because under the Cable Act, they, they are required to pay a franchise fee determined by the town, here determined through the negotiation for community television. Massachusetts is unique in that the franchise fee must be used for PEG access and cable-related purposes. That's not true in the rest of the country. So as a result, Massachusetts and clearly Medfield has very strong community programming. If they were not providing cable service over a cable system, then they would have no obligation under the Cable Act to provide up to 5% of the gross revenues for you to run your community television and to provide PEG capital dollars. And in that world, which is not existing now, there may be opportunities for towns to have certain fees and there'd be certain opportunities that access would have to say, well, we're not just going to give you our programming, you have to pay. So in this paradigm, this goes back to 1984 of the Cable Act, Article 6 of the Telecommunication Act, it's a defined definition and there are certain responsibilities. If they leave that and truly leave it not just in name, but in what they do, then they wouldn't be subject to that. And clearly they would have fewer, maybe have a different paradigm to buy their programming. They might find it less expensive, they might, they would certainly, it seems to me, have less customer service because cable service does have more customer service than the internet does, try calling your internet provider and finding, getting a person. So that's something that they've discussed with Wall Street, they, they, they look at, but for now, to their credit, they're an excellent cable company, they're looking to renew and we're looking to renew with them for, for a commitment of at least three years and potentially five. And in my recognition, and I've done this elsewhere, I believe that we should give them the, their right to get out after three years because in exchange for that, we're getting those five years of capital. And in fact, I do believe that they'll, they'll, they'll be here for, for five years. The license would have the same franchise fee as currently, 4.8% of gross revenues. It would have capital that, that changes only in this sense. Under the current license, the capital's paid as a quarter percent of their gross revenue plus a set dollar amount. The set dollar amount is $20,000 a year for five years. Going forward, because they're going to, if we allow, we agree to the unilateral out, then we're not going to have a percentage of gross revenue because if they get out in three years, we don't have that revenue for years four or five. So we'll have a set dollar amount of capital for five years paid in three years. That has some advantages to the town because when that capital dollar is set, then it is what it is and you can make an investment based, you have an expectation based on that investment. So the license, 4.8%, will continue as the, as the operating, the franchise fee of their gross revenues and will change from a duality of a percentage of gross revenue and a set dollar amount to that set dollar amount. But other than that, the legal protections would be, be as, as exist in the current license.
So Bill, as, as someone who David tells us has more knowledge about this than anybody else in the universe, my understanding is that Verizon and Comcast are looking at out from under, getting from out, from underpaying these fees.
Well, you know.
Is that going to happen?
Yeah, so let me divide it. I wouldn't say that Verizon is looking to get out of paying the fees, they just prefer, in their view, to look at this different model. You know, the reason they got into cable is because they made the determination that without video, they couldn't offer that triple play. They had the cell phone, they had the internet, phone at home or quadruple play, but at that point, it was the phone at home, the, the internet, and they felt they needed video. So they, in order to compete, they decided they must provide video and that would be cable at that point, as AT&amp;T decided separately. Now, as with, with, you know, the internet becoming a more ubiquitous instrument in everyone's life and video being provided there as well as small cell, in their world, they will, would want to put up small cell antennas throughout the town and provide video through those small cells. They also have some business reasons why, you know, one, one business has unions, one doesn't. So it's less to get out of paying the town, but it's more because they view the, the future of, of video as being more click-based. Comcast, on the other hand, has been a cable company for 40 years and, and is an excellent cable company and wants to be a cable company and still makes a tremendous financial, tremendous financial benefit from being a cable company. So they're not looking not to be a cable company. In fact, they're not looking for anything when we do the renewal coming up, they're not looking for any license other than at this point for 10 years. So the Comcast is remaining a cable company and is committed to that at this point and I think will be. And Verizon has dreams of making a shift, but that is not something that's happened yet and I don't see that happening right away.
All right, so we don't have to start allocating town monies for Medfield TV's support?
Yeah, other than, that's a great point that they're, yeah, go ahead, Dave. Yes, sir.
Great questions, thank you. Yeah, you've heard of the term cutting the cord and this is what the subscribers are doing and this is why Verizon is looking in that direction as well, because they're not as embedded in cable TV as Comcast is. And with that cutting the cord, we are seeing an erosion of income on the order of 1% or 2% per year. So there are fewer and fewer cable TV subscribers because more people are subscribing to Netflix and Amazon, YouTube TV, Hulu, you know, you name it, Slingbox. And those services are all delivered by the internet and they are not subject to the franchise fees. And this is one of the things that's been occasionally brought up at the State House and there have been attempts to come up with a bill, pardon the pun, that would arrange for some kind of a, a fee to deliver packaged cable-like TV services to the community so that we can continue to do what the FCC was envisioning. Actually, the whole idea of PEG TV actually goes up back perhaps another 10 or 15 years before 1984. And the idea is that you have TV stations that cover a market, but local towns don't have the same opportunity to broadcast over the air to their residents. So instead, this whole system was set up where public access, educational and government channels were made a part of the franchise that a town would grant to a cable TV company. But technology has moved way on and we need to find a way to move the funding forward in that same direction.
So is that likely to be state legislation or federal legislation?
Definitely state. And Bill can comment on that more, I think, but Massachusetts is kind of in the forefront of PEG TV and we hope that everyone in the state can recognize that and come up with a, some kind of a model for, for funding going forward.
So my last thing is I would just share what I told Katie already, that I saw the video that they produced for the Peak House Heritage Society and it's just excellent. It's like watching something on Channel 2 or WGBH. It was just great. We're so fortunate to have you guys doing things in town, so thank you.
Thank you. Just 10 seconds, that your point, second piece, that, that towns may have to fund community television is right. You know, the, the, the aim is to try to broaden the state law, federal law, you know, in the world we live in, very hard to change. But, but you make a great point that towns are now understanding that there may be a point where this is something that towns pay, play a role in funding. And that's the advantage we have here in Massachusetts is that towns and representatives see what community television means to the town. So it's not asking people to fund something they're not familiar with or they don't see the benefit of. But for now, we're looking to get a, we will get a strong license from Verizon. The renewal from Comcast, we'll get a strong license from, from Comcast. But, but you're right, going forward, it's something that, that the parties need to discuss and maybe something that at one point has to happen.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm subject to Bill's overriding me, but ultimately, the federal government has the authority and so any action the state could take would be subject to whether or not Congress would allow it to stand or they would just preempt the whole thing. There have, there have been movements up to this point with lobbying for that very purpose.
That's exactly right. 10 years ago, there was a bill that looked like it was going to pass that where Verizon and AT&amp;T were behind, that would allow a cable company to get a license, national license, in 14 days from the Federal Communications Commission. And that passed the House but didn't pass the Senate, then the Senate makeup changed. So that's not something that's come back. The good news is that it's hard to get something passed and the Cable Act is in place. But, but because you're so close in your relationship, you can have the communication to figure out how you best meet the towns' and the public's needs and interests.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of questions, the, and understand that there was 180 pages in our information packet.
Sure.
So in, in working my way through that, I actually did start reading this, like, you've seen me once before, if this is a five-year contract, you, last time I saw a contract on this was my first year as a selectman, so I'm sitting there racking my brain and my memory. I kind of remember this stuff, but as I was reading it, there were questions that came up. One of the things that just struck me as I was going through, it's pages 14 through 17, I think, of the, of the contract as it's worded, there are a number of different paragraphs that all have to do with PEG access, the use of PEG. And it sounded like Verizon was trying to protect the service it was providing in support of PEG in the face of the possibility that the town might try to bring other content in from other presumably competing providers that would try to run through our own system. So I had, that prompted a couple of questions. Number one, is Verizon the only one who contributes to our PEG?
No, great question. So these are non-exclusive licenses, so it doesn't stop anyone else. And of course, so Comcast is the incumbent sort of traditional cable provider and they're about three years away from renewal. We're starting that process with Medfield now, myself and, and your staff. So they have a 10-year license that's up in three years and Verizon's license, which is up this, this coming March, June, will continue. So you have two providers, which, you know, there are quite a few communities in Massachusetts that have two providers, but a lot of communities do not, any communities even not that far from you. So this board's done an excellent job in encouraging someone to come in. Verizon is no longer building, hasn't built cable systems in towns for, in cities for about five years. In the West Coast, they sold some. So, you know, we're fortunate that Verizon is, is here and providing cable and doing an excellent job. But two providers and when, together with your staff and, and your work, we make sure that those licenses are comparable so neither one can have, have an argument that they're being treated in a contractual sense differently and, and the licenses are comparable. That said, that in exchange for a five-year license and a three-year unilateral out, we, we will be able to achieve some premium in that capital payment in exchange for that flexibility. And so to Verizon's credit, they understand that, that if the most important issue for them is flexibility, then in exchange for that, the town needs some certainty and some sort of of premium on the payment to balance out time and certainty on your side.
So you first answered my second question, and then you opened it back up for me. And if my question is too fuzzy, I'll do more work to figure this out. There's a paragraph in here that, as I read it, Verizon basically was talking about all these potential ways that other providers could be providing content, and that, actually, it sounded to me like they were almost saying, "Make, you can't put other people's content on what we're providing."
Let me take a look at that, because I'm not sure. It may be, it may be less than meets the eye. And if, what I can do is, I can, I can look at the paragraph you referenced.
It's between pages 14 and 17, and it's the whole series of PEG, there's a bunch of PEG paragraphs, and I was sitting there saying, "Jad, I don't remember reading this much about PEG five years ago," but I don't remember very much about reading the contract five years ago. The one clause that I did see in one of the paragraphs that caught my attention was a clause that, or a sentence that, to the effect, said, "In the event that you negotiate more attractive terms with another provider," you, the way I read it was, "You need to give us those same terms."
Yes.
So when you said that they're paying a premium, that's what reopened that question for me. You first said, "Well, we're going to make sure we, you know, have comparable agreements." Then you answered the question, but then when you said, "But because they're asking for certain flexibilities,"
Great.
"Then they're paying a premium." How does that get baked in?
Great, 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 great point. That the, in the, in the proposed license, the provision, as you state, that if someone else gets a better deal, then they get the better deal, applies to the PEG operating, the franchise fee, which would be 4.8% for both companies, but does not apply to the capital payment. And that's exactly right, because if it did, then how can you, you say, "How can you get a premium?" And then at the same time, say that no one else will be treated better. So only applies to the PEG operating. That's the same for both. PEG capital, the differential isn't that great, but it mirrors the advantage of flexibility. And so that part, that, exactly right. There's no, there's no level playing field provision in the PEG capital for that very reason. So that's a great point.
And then my only other comment to Medfield TV is that I would absolutely endorse both of your comments about the important role that the Medfield TV plays here in town. Certainly in the COVID crisis, that was an even more important connecting channel than would otherwise have been the case, but I actually think more broadly at a time when news, local news is hard to, you know, the overall volume of local news and the thoroughness of it has been going down for years. In some ways, Medfield TV has helped to fill that gap. And from a pure town standpoint, in my view, the hard part about getting people in town to engage in town of issues is either they engage so superficially that they draw conclusions that you have to put a lot of time and effort into countering because they just didn't get deep enough, or it's too hard for people who really want to do it. And so the pure logistics of making it to meetings and being there and being dressed up for it versus being able to sometimes find out what happens in those meetings is a big deal. And that's, that's kind of talked about, the public learning about what we do. But I would add to that, as a selectman who sometimes doesn't want to have to get dressed up to go to a meeting, but would kind of like to know what's said, either live or in some cases after the fact, it's actually very helpful going the other way, to simply do the sort of things that we do. So I think, I think local TV has been very important to this town. I can kind of sense that probably the full potential has not been tapped, but I think there's already been a big impact on the town, and not just when we were sort of in a crisis mode, but in general. So I appreciate that you're here, and certainly glad to see that you're sticking around.
Very last point. I just want, I could never live up to Dave's kind words, but I want to give an example since these are under-the-radar things, where our license here in Medfield differs from other licenses of, in other places. As you know, the most important definition is gross revenue, because your 4.8% gets applied to gross revenue. In most Verizon licenses, there's a provision that says that when services are bundled, cable, internet and telephone, that the determination of how much of that bundle is attributable to cable, because that's the only place where you apply our percentage, is determined by how Verizon keeps its books and in accordance with applicable federal and state law. Well, there is no state law and federal law. So in a town that agrees to that, they're saying Verizon can keep its books, such that in the past, a cable company would say, "Cable is $70, and if you just get cable, you can get 20 for internet and 15 for telephone." So most of that is, was cable. But in the world we're in now, there's more video competition, so there's an incentive for companies to say, "Oh, no, no, internet is $80, and if you get internet, you only have to pay 15 for cable." So now you've lost a tremendous amount of your revenue. So of course, no town should be saying in a license, agreeing a license, that how Verizon keeps its books determines how much of that bundle. In our license, it says that that's determined under GAAP, which now has a rule that says you look at the individual prices, not perfect, but the individual prices. And it says that nothing prevents Verizon from paying, from attributing more money to cable in a bundle than GAAP would otherwise require it. So that's one of a myriad of examples, but maybe the most important, where that the language makes a critical difference to make sure that the town of Medfield gets what it believes it's negotiating. And so, again, I can't live up to Dave's kind words, but that's, I think, one good example to say what, the devil's in the details, and we're making sure that we have the details right in your license. So thank you.
And Bill saying that gave me time to remember one more comment I had for you, Katie. I really appreciate that you're using the school committee as the guinea pig for the experimental things you do around things like hybrid meetings before you bring them here. So thank you very much. Please, well, it's an excellent policy. I think you should stick with it. Let's hope nobody from the school committee is listening tonight. Are there any public comments? I'm not sure, is it a public hearing? So if there are any additional comments? Okay, then I think I can close the public hearing, and we'll look forward to seeing the, we do have another meeting on the 20th of December, so there is another meeting this month, probably aren't anxious to come in between Christmas and New Year's.
I'd be happy, you know, there's why it takes time, but I, so I think it's challenging, but if there's any reason to come in, one is if they're done, we're done. Or two, if there's an issue that I feel that, you know, one, discussion of it would move all on behalf of you.
Okay. Otherwise, I think the 10th of January is our first meeting after the New Year. So, okay.
Well, thank you so much.
Well, thanks for, thanks for coming. That's very good. Okay. All right, that is public hearing number one. We now have public hearing number two. The second public hearing is the Public Hearing Tax Classification Hearing. This is done on an annual basis to take a look at whether we are going to use a divided tax rate or a uniform tax rate for both residential and commercial entities. I will hereby declare the public hearing open. And, yes, thank you. I was wondering whether I had to announce that. This was, this particular public hearing had a legal notice that was published in the, I assume, Hometown Weekly? Yes. The Medfield Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 6, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Chenery Meeting Room, second floor, Townhouse, 459 Main Street, for tax classification purposes. The central issue to be discussed during this tax classification hearing is whether all five classes of property, residential, open space, commercial, industrial and personal, shall be taxed at the same rate or at different rates for the fiscal year 2023. It's in reference to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56. The Board of Assessors will provide relevant information regarding the tax rate, including the fiscal effects of available alternatives. Interested taxpayers are urged to attend the meeting, the hearing. Written and oral statements from interested taxpayers will be accepted by the Board of Selectmen's Office and taken into consideration at the hearing. Do we have any written submissions? No, so there were no written submissions. So we'll start this, take it away, Yvonne.
Thanks. Okay, so you basically read it in the article. Every year by statute, we're required to hold this hearing, and you are required to decide if you want to split the rate or not. It is our responsibility as the Board of Assessors and the representative to provide you with relevant information in making your decision. Okay, so I'll just go over a couple of basic terms here. So the tax rate is basically the tax levy divided by the town's taxable value. If you use a uniform tax rate, each class of property pays a share of the tax levy equal to its share of the total town value. So it's basically a one-for-one, and that's why if you're going to keep a uniform rate, you vote one. Okay, so the next slide. Okay. So the residential factor, so if you decide to split the rate, you would be reducing the residential factor. So I'm giving an example in the slide here. If you decide to use the maximum split tax rate of 50%, the residential factor would be .97. I won't read that number. But basically, you know, not even 3% under the one. The residential tax rate would be 1501, and your commercial, industrial, personal tax rate would be 2315. So our surrounding towns, this is what they do. Since not everybody has determined their fiscal year 23 tax rate yet, I'm giving you last year's. And if you've seen this presentation before, these numbers really don't change that much. You can see that Dover, Norfolk, Millis and Sherburne all have single tax rate, as do we. And our residential percentage, that's the last column, is very similar. So for last year, we were at 94.47, and Sherburne, Millis, Norfolk and Dover, they're all in the 90s. So the two towns around us that do split their rate are Walpole and Westwood, but you can see their residential percentage is lower than ours, and so they have a much deeper commercial base. Okay, so I've already said this a couple of times, we haven't split the rate. You've always maintained a uniform tax rate. Shifting the tax rate would significantly increase the taxes for those commercial, industrial and personal properties, while the residential properties would only benefit from a small savings, which I'll show in the next couple of slides. So overall, this year, the share of the tax levy for the commercial, industrial, personal properties is 2.7 million. If you were to shift it with those three, these are the most popular shifts, 10%, you can do the math, it's basically 10% on that 2.7. So it's a little over 3 million, 3.4 and 4.1. Where you really see the, the financial impact on the commercial properties is in the individual scenario. So our new single-family average value is 839.8, and so our tax, our estimated tax rate right now for fiscal year 23 is 1543. So they would be paying not quite 13,000. So if you have a uniform tax rate, the residential and the commercial property valued at 839.8 would pay the same. And you can see with each one of those shifts, the residential, if you shifted 10%, the residents are only going to save $75 on that almost $13,000 tax bill, whereas your commercial property are going to be paying about 1,300. And as you move up, you can see what a difference that would make if you chose the 50% shift. Our residents would only see about 353 savings, whereas your commercial would be paying over 6,000. So it's a tremendous difference because we don't have very much commercial here. So here's historically what we have done, our tax rates. As you can see, the percentage borne by the commercial, industrial and personal properties is always about 5% and change, and their tax dollars have increased and it's decreased a little bit. This year, it has decreased a little bit because there was more of a shift for residential. We had a lot more growth, new growth on the residential side than the commercial. We don't have a lot of commercial growth, so, you know, the values have shifted just a little bit, but we're still in about the same range. And here again is our single-family averages over the last several years. This year, we're at 839.8, and we're looking at a tax bill about 12,958, which is up 3.2% from last year on taxes.
Yvonne, that's, that's more than a $100,000 jump on that average. Is that the new growth?
No, that's the market change. So the market, the market change is that, the 839.8.
Yvonne, what is 839.8? Is that the average?
Average single family. So it's the, it's just single families. It doesn't include condos or multifamilies or any commercial properties, just, just the residential, single families.
You're making me feel richer.
Good.
Well, I'm trying to figure out the lag. So I'm thinking that number probably is driven off the post-COVID recovery, not the current inflation and hiking interest rates and the impact they're going to have.
Right. So our fiscal '23 values are based on calendar year '21 sales. So all of that that you've just mentioned, the interest rate hikes, the inflation, that is all happening now.
Right.
But the sales are still very strong during '22, too.
Right, right, okay.
Okay, so the Board of Assessors recommends, last slide. That's okay. Maintaining a uniform tax rate in which you would have to vote to adopt a residential factor of one. Do you have any more questions? Or if the public has any questions, comments?
Any questions?
No, I mean, I am familiar with this, and we certainly all wish we had more commercial. I know what Westwood has and what Walpole has is pretty substantial, so I can see where they get away with that, but I think if we were to do that, we would be pushing any of the smaller businesses that are in town, we'd be pushing them out, and we're, we want just the opposite, we want to keep them here. And I think some of the smaller businesses that are in town are people that actually live in town, so they're here employing residents and surrounding towns, giving them opportunities for employment. So I, you know, I wish I, we could split it, but it would not make sense, it would be detrimental, so one works for me.
Pete?
I, again, support a unitary tax rate. My question, although, is about the new growth that you referenced. Where is that, what is that? Is that, is that like Chapel Hill Landing, or?
It's a lot of things, yes. So it's, it's anyone who had a major permit, so even if you had an addition, so say you put an addition on your house, that would be counted as new growth. So the majority of the new growth does come from the major new construction, like we had Aura, the apartment building.
Oh, yeah.
And then Chapel Hill, of course, is still finishing up. They're going to be finished for '23. In, for '24, I mean, they had some more in '23. Of course, Henry Way came on, so those are the bigger projects that have come on. So, but, but if you had, you know, if you have neighbors that you know that put on an addition, or if they put on a garage or a barn or, you know, porch, all of that counts as new growth, because it's new construction.
Big developments are.
They're the main drivers.
Chapel Hill, Aura and Henry Way.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And, oh, the other one that came on, two this year that I was surprised, but maybe I shouldn't be, was McCready's Development at the Tavern. Some of that has come on, because that has started. So if anything started prior to June 30th, we have captured part of that growth, so. But that, that value is based on the market, the 839.8. I mean, growth will be included in there, but most of that is the market, so.
And every year we do this, it feels like sort of a pro forma public hearing to come to a conclusion
We are required.
... that the recommendation that hasn't changed in all these years is still the best recommendation. So I guess I'd open it up if there's anybody in the public that would like to comment, to include anyone online if they're, I can figure out how to get that up. No questions, okay? I guess we can, your motion? Oh, do I have to close the public hearing first? See, I've had, I've had a chance to practice this in the last month. So with no further comments, I will officially close the public hearing, and now.
I would move to adopt a single tax rate.
Second. Residential factor of one.
Single tax rate of one.
Residential tax, residential factor of one.
The residential tax of one. As the town council stated, I move to still move.
Actually, that motion's intrigued me now. Do we have an option of saying a single rate of two, three, or?
No. No, it's one.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, okay. Motion carries.
All right, just one last bit of business. If you could sign that we want to submit tomorrow morning, first thing, if you could sign the LA 5 for me before I leave. And on the LA 5, I've highlighted the excess levy capacity, which I- And on the LA 5, I've highlighted the excess levy capacity, which I'm to inform you.
Oh, it's all of us?
Yes. It's 254,000 and change, but it is on there and is highlighted for you.
Right here, and I just, and I just, just free-floating out here on the left.
So Yvonne, I'll just share that I was, I'll just share that I was so excited to see my tax rate go down a lot, but then again, you raised my value so much that my taxes are going to stay the same.
I'm just grateful that we don't have to do that online signature that we usually have to. This is, this is actually more straightforward.
Yes. Mike Soloway was the only person that knew my password, I think.
You can have that, I don't know if you need, you know. Thanks, Yvonne. Okay, let's see. I think Christine, you had suggested that we might jump to the citizen comment, so, because I know Lars is having a good time here, and he's delighted to let us go to the citizen comment first. I believe we had one citizen comment scheduled, which is Dana Rain, who wants to talk about leaf blowing noise. Is that an on late? Huh? Oh, is it David? It's, that says David. Well, you can see if it's me or the, okay, it's David, okay. So sorry, David. Do you want us to time you, or you can have as much time as you'd like to take? We run things a little looser here. If you go, if, if you take more than 20 minutes, we might ask you to wrap it up.
You might have to drive home really slow.
Thank you for the time today. It is also fascinating, my first meeting here.
Well, come on back.
Probably, I probably will.
We didn't have, some of the material, some of the material at tonight's meeting isn't quite as good to work with for the entertainment value as other meetings are.
Well, I wish the Medfield TV people were here, because kudos to them, for sure. I totally agree. So thank you for the time, and yes, this is about the leaf blowing, or I guess I should say debris blowing and the noise affiliated with it. Can I just introduce myself for a moment?
Sure.
If that's okay. So, my name is David Beam. My wife and I, Stacy, we are residents of Medfield for 25 years now. What I would call, it's hard to believe it's 25 years, the old newcomers of Medfield. I recently retired. I was a business owner in Wellesley for 30 years, and finding I have a little bit more time now, which is kind of nice, getting involved in many, many things. And it's nice to be turning the page on life. In the past, I could not even imagine, tough to find the time even to come to a meeting or participate like this, you know, all what is running a business, particularly over the last five years. So it's great to be able to do this. Between my wife Stacy and I, we've been involved a little bit in community activities, certainly not a lot. Like most people, we did attend the meetings when important votes came up for the town, for subjects of discussion and that sort of thing. My wife Stacy, she has volunteered in certain causes and functions over the years, particularly when we had a child in the school system. She's now down in Baltimore. For myself, I can say a little bit of involvement on part of Sustainable Med, Sustainable Medfield recently, which is a great organization. We have one of the few solar roofs in town. It's not panels, it's actually the roof shingles are made out of the solar material, so I'm involved with Sustainable Medfield a little bit, and I'll probably join the gardening club this, this spring. So the topic that I did want to bring up, and I'm sure it's come up before, I can imagine over the past 25 years, noise pollution, like its cousin sound, is, air pollution is just plain bad. And between working all my days on Saturdays and weekdays in Medfield and in Wellesley, those very loud, almost continuous, gas-powered leaf and other debris blowers are pretty awful, I think. And I, and I know it's somewhat seasonal, but it seems to me now that anytime there's not snow on the ground, whether it be spring, fall, or summer, you hear these things constantly, and I'm sure there's some regulation on them. It's a terribly loud sound. It's almost as common as the wind. In fact, when I was writing this email that day, probably three and a half hours of the daylight time, that, you could hear that sound with somebody within 500 yards of the house, or something like that. One would start, one would end, another would start, another would end, and that sort of thing. So I, I guess the reason I raised it, not only because I have a little bit more time now, is I did hear on the radio, as you probably heard recently, that mentioned the town of Lexington, apparently, and I'm sure they must have debated this thoroughly. I think they banned them, either went all the way or totally, almost all the way, the gas-powered debris blowers. And I'm sure they had, you know, there's a lot of pros and cons to it. I get that, I'm sure there's a lot to it. Just seems to be getting worse each year, and part of it is obviously the growth of our town. You know, there's, there's more lawns, and there's more leaves to blow around, when there's more construction and more property and that sort of thing. I know some people have purchased the electric blowers, a couple of our neighbors have, that's, that does help a little bit. So, I'm sure like the town of Lexington went through, there's a lot of pros and cons, and I was just wondering, I wanted to bring it up. Has this been discussed in the town before? Did it hit a brick wall? And I guess I'm just kind of here to bring it up again and maybe see if it could be pushed forward a little bit, even if it, I'm sure there are some regulations on it now for the time of the day and that sort of thing, but one I'd heard, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that I did hear, I thought the town of Lexington totally went out and banned it, and I'm sure it was not an easy thing to do. I said, I wonder if we, maybe we could consider that, or consider electric, electric blowers or something like that. It's just incredibly noticeable to me, so that's all. I wanted to bring it up and see what, if it could be moved forward, or maybe what the history of it's been in.
Mark?
We have a noise bylaw that was modeled after one that I had drafted in Franklin. It basically describes activities, commercial activities, and those that are deemed to be objectionable are prohibited during certain hours. There's not, it's a town bylaw, there's nothing etched in stone about those hours or the activities, although we try to strike a balance based on the pushback we've had both historically in Medfield and trying to put it into in Franklin as well, which is that there's a certain pushback of big brotherism. So we've exempted people doing their own yard work, for instance. It applies to commercial landscapers or what have you, contractors, but not to property owners. What you suggested, I wasn't particularly aware of that, Lexington, but it would be, again, it would be a town bylaw that would have to be enacted, subject to the Attorney General's approval. And so the town meeting warrant is already opened. If that's something you were interested in, you're really in the closing time opportunity to proceed on that. We have historically, going back to my very first year as town council, and then select member, Harry Petroni, tried to do something relative, he thought was modest because of complaints in neighborhoods, and it was a reasonable regulation of noisy activities, and it was a very contentious town meeting, and it was overwhelmingly voted down at that time. So then we came back again, much later, with what we, what I described earlier that we put in place, so. That's.
Just, just, I'll give you, you can start again, but just to answer your immediate question, Pete, you may, your memory goes back longer than mine. To my knowledge, in the almost six years I've been on the board of segment, that actually has not come up. We have had some individual incidents of neighbors having noise complaints, not necessarily leaf blowers. Yeah, so, yeah, stone cutters was one, one of the more recent ones, yeah. So it's, so there are, there have been sporadic complaints about specific neighbors not appreciating the noise being made by other neighbors, probably particularly like early on a Saturday morning, or on a holiday morning, sometime when people might reasonably have planned to sleep in. And so we have had that, but we haven't actually had any sort of a real concerted issue, to my knowledge, brought up here.
I'm not aware of anything on it, David, at all, coming up.
But it came up, sounds like, a longer time ago?
Yeah, I mean, that's all 30 years ago.
Is there any regulation on the, on the time, now, you know, five in the morning, you're always out there doing it, or at least the commercial?
Only a landscaper cannot use it from, I think, whatever it did.
Seven to seven. I do know that answer, from an incident.
So a property owner wants to get up bright and early, get out there, nothing's stopping them from doing it.
In theory, it's, I get, one neighbor could say another neighbor, like, you know, but what's what, we ran into in my neighborhood a couple months back is a commercial group showed up bright and early on a Saturday morning and just started cutting away, Labor Day weekend, if I'm not mistaken. And then we were all asking, like, how can that happen, right? Because that, that's just crazy. But yeah, so individual homeowners right now, there's no regulation, but if you were to have worked on by a contractor in your house, there are limitations. And I'm actually going to put forth at the town meeting that seven gets bumped to eight on a Saturday and nine on a Sunday, because you shouldn't have people working, doing really loud, obnoxious things on a Saturday morning or a Sunday morning. But, you know, David, when you sent me the email, or sent us the email, I actually did a little bit of homework, because I have family that lives in Westport, Connecticut. And Westport, Connecticut, we've been through a rather extensive discussion on this for a couple of years, and then I reached out to a couple landscapers that I know, and I can see this starting to move down the path where people are going to try to push the gas out, but there's a couple of pressure points that are going to make it difficult, one being that the flow off of the electric blower, especially for a commercial landscaper, is not strong enough right now, so that if it's costing somebody $800 today to get their yard clean, that could easily cost them $1,600, because it's going to take twice as long. And then it's the, as the battery, and I think we're seeing this with electric cars, as the battery technology improves, so you can get a longer use of it, I see people wanting to go to that more and more and get away from the gas, but we're challenged with what is the bandwidth that someone can handle. And then what's interesting in Westport is, they wanted to force it on the, on the private homeowner, but the town property is still going to be allowed to use it. I'm like, okay, talk about, like, we can do it, but you can't. I just chuckled at that, but it was, it was because of the budgets that they knew that they couldn't take on the new cost, if I'm not mistaken, that was part of the red flag. So I think it's a really good discussion to start having with people, but I just don't know how quick we could impact it until we really were able to look at, where's the technology? How do we start enforcing it? And I'm not even trying to poke at something, but like, I know this past summer, we, there's certain things we can't enforce. We can send bills out, but the state's not going to let us really chase it. So the last thing I'd want to do is say we're going to do something, and once again, get in a predicament where, you know, people, people were leaving their sprinklers on, and yes, they were getting notices, but how much teeth did Moe really have to chase down people to pay those bills? So here, we try to do something like this, and if people just do it, and then other neighbors are getting frustrated because they think there's, that they shouldn't be, right now, it's just not, it's not a pretty solution.
I wonder, I wonder what they did in Lexington, I bet that, I'm trying to find some friends of.
Yeah, definitely.
It was a five-year phase out. So residential and commercial are no longer allowed to use gas power, and they had a five-year sunset.
And that just, that five-year period just started, correct?
The other issue about it is that, I mean, gas engines for cars are getting phased out, and the small gas engines on these yard maintenance products are way more polluting than cars, I think, is the reality. And so I'm guessing that there'll be some sort of phase out of those gas engines, just the way there are for the car engines. So the future is the electric, certainly.
And your point's a good one. I know it takes a lot of energy and a lot of pressure to blow, or to leave them, the debris. And all that, and landscapers use it one. And I know the cost would obviously go up if this was passed, but I'm aware of it. Wouldn't happen next, if anything.
Another comment, Bill?
Yeah, just, just a comment. So in my neighborhood, it seems like most of the noise is commercial. And not only do you have the leaf blowing, but I, but I will, I'll give the people who do the leaf blowing credit, the commercial firms. I mean, they get it done in about half the time it takes them to vacuum up and dispose of the leaves, which is just as noisy, or perhaps even noisier than the blowers. So your issue isn't stopping, by the way, I have started with a extension cord and an electric blower, and now I'm using an EGO, which is working just fine for me. I mean, I do my acre roughly with leaves, it takes me three days, but I do it. But you have the issue, it's mostly commercial, and it's not, it's not your neighbor who's doing this, and you're going to run into now the costs that are going to be associated with pushing the developers to, excuse me, pushing the commercial people to electricity, which is probably going to be more expensive. I mean, I don't care, I don't care, as long as I can, I'm doing my leave, so it's not impacting me, the cost of it. But that will be one of, I think, one of the pushbacks that you're going to, you're going to run into.
I mean, they'll, they'll have increased the capabilities on their vehicles to be able to do recharging. I think the landscapers see it in the, in the horizon. I think that the reality is that everything will start to go electric, but they're going to have to have the ability to recharge on the fly, right? Because you can't have a, have a truck full of batteries, that's not helping the economy, helping the green environment either. But if you can put one on, on your truck and have it recharge while you're using another one, have a quick recharge, you know, there's, there's light at the end of the tunnel.
But how do they, how do they get the recharge? You got to run a gasoline engine to get the recharge, or a diesel engine to get the recharge. So you're stuck in this loop, that right now, there is no, no easy way to generate electricity, portable electricity, to keep something going.
Well, you'd like to think there's some form of solar panels and things like that, that they.
Well, yeah, it doesn't.
Doesn't generate that much.
And not that fast. I mean, it'd be fine if you, so I mean, you're still stuck with storage, and storage is still the biggest problem, and nobody yet has come up with a way to.
And they end up in a landfill at some point, which is not good either.
No.
Yeah, I think relative to electrification, I think that there are states that have put in restrictions that are way out in front of the actual technology solutions that are needed. I actually am not as optimistic that we're all just going to be electrified in accordance with the current, the current schedule, but it's on technical grounds that I doubt it. However, that's sort of irrelevant. In listening to this conversation, it started off as a conversation about noise, and it rapidly moved into a conversation about gas-powered engines. I think one thing that would help me figure out what, how to think about this, is to understand whether the issue we're dealing with is noise, or whether the issue we're dealing with is a viewpoint about we need to get rid of all gas-powered tools. And I think to, in thinking about how we could possibly take a look at, you know, the town, I'm not talking about us, I'm talking about the town, how the town could look at responding to the issue you started with, which was noise. You know, Mark has talked about, well, one, I think one step, one potential step could be, you may, may not know this, but citizens can submit petitions for inclusion on the warrant article for our annual town meetings. The next annual town meeting is in May, and we've had in the past couple of years, a couple of citizen petitions, requires 15?
10.
10. So you require 10 people to say, yeah, we all want this. But the issue that Mark is talking about would be an issue even, you know, you can get it on the agenda, but the question is, what are you going to get on the agenda? Because if I looked at it and said, well, if you wanted a blanket, you know, get rid of all this stuff, my guess is, there would be a lot of blowback. Oddly enough, in our neighborhood, we don't have that many people that are bringing in landscapers that are noisy in the morning. There are some, but it's not that big a deal in our neighborhood. But other neighborhoods that use a lot of landscapers, if the implications of the town going in a particular direction fundamentally mean either you'll have to pay twice as much for a landscaper, or we're putting landscapers out of business for that, for that kind of purpose, then you're going to get pushback on people who don't want to not have landscapers, so.
It's thorny, and I don't.
Yeah. What, where I'm headed with this, and I don't want to force it anywhere, I just, my thought about this is, when you say, where can we go from here? Well, one immediate, short, you know, short term would be to get an article in proposing whatever it is you propose, you would want to propose, and have it be a citizen article, because part of me says, actually, what I would like to have is sort of a sense of a public referendum about how, if the entire town says, yeah, we want to get rid of all this stuff, for whatever reason, well, that's, that's one thing. If certain people want to get rid of it, and the entire town is not on board, I would like that referendum to take place, so we know what the town really thinks, as opposed to just having one group push in a particular direction, yeah.
So I think, to go back to, select board member of Murphy's Point.
So I think, to go back to, uh, select board member of Murphy's point, a better chance would be to expand the time, the prohibited times. I think it's already included as an activity, again, by contractors. And you just expand the times that it's prohibited, I think you have a way better chance than.
So I, I, I hadn't actually heard the details of your article, but I would, you know, I would certainly support that kind of, again, if the issue is noise, and the issue is directed at the noise that commercial landscapers make early in the morning on, on the weekends.
Or even contractors of any type.
Well, I mean, commercial, as opposed to, as opposed to a private landowner working on their own lawn, is what I'm saying.
Exactly.
If that's the issue, I think perhaps the article you're thinking about will get at that, at least the incremental relief around early morning noise. If the issue is something else, well, then, I'm just saying, I think you'd, you'd have to think through what that something else needs to be, and you're going to have to handicap how likely it is you'll get broad public support for that something else. And I think as a private citizen, you have a right to think that through. You have a right to put down and, you know, put your ticket on the horse in the race and see what happens. If it were strictly a bylaw, you know, even in a bylaw change, we would need, we would need town meeting approval for that bylaw change. So the mechanism is a town meeting bylaw change, perhaps along the line of what Eileen's talking about. If, you know, if you have other ideas of what that change needs to be, I would think we, I'll be open to hearing what those opinions are, recognizing that noon time on Saturday and Sunday probably isn't going to get it, but.
If you're inclined to go the citizen petition route, you should work to coordinate with administration and myself.
Right.
Because we're restricted by the language. So if you turn in something that subsequently turns out to not be properly worded, or has unintended consequences or whatever, we don't have the flexibility to change it, it is what it is, whatever you submit it, so.
Not to suggest you're doing this, but sometimes we get complaints from people who don't like something that's going on in their neighborhood, and it's their neighbors that they're not happy about. Generally speaking, we would probably prefer to be kept out of one-on-one neighbor issues. Our first, unless it becomes an intransigent neighbor, you know, that's different. But first pass on one neighbor not appreciating what another neighbor is doing is probably just to say, why don't you go talk to them, see if you can work it out. That doesn't mean you can't come to the Board of Selectmen for help with neighbors who just flat out aren't willing to do anything. That's a different thing. But it, when it's a one-on-one and it's unique, generally speaking, I think the town's better off not getting too deep into those things, unless it's just, you know, there's intransigence that somebody's done their best and they can't get anywhere. Then I suppose we can explore what we could do.
If you're part of the world, it is mostly commercial. And I think the issue would be noise, yes, the issue's noise, but true, most of the noise is commercially generated. Because maybe they have the bigger, better equipment that's louder and all that stuff, too. And plus, there's a lot of people that can afford to, you know, the landscapers.
But even then, maybe when they afford the landscapers, they say, I don't want you showing up before 10 o'clock.
Well, that's true, yeah.
And they're probably operating multiples, too. You know, they got a whole crew in the, every one of them has one of those going, so.
It's like town, right, like Bill said, you know, I know in our neighborhood, you get, you know, five or six guys that jump off a truck.
Yep.
And they all blow it to the front, and then it's like a 20-volt power mower that just sucks them all as they get to the street. So, you know, they're gone fast, but there's a lot of noise. Yeah, it seemed to be gone fast, but then another one starts up an hour later at, at another place. And you, you can generally hear them, I don't know.
The noise carries.
Now, what I've noticed is not only do they have the ones where they do the shoulder one, but they add a little reinforcement built, you know, with a standing one. Just noticed that, actually, just happened, they don't, they'll have a standing one there in the area, real strong one, in addition to falling around. So I don't know if that's a new concept, maybe just again, to do it faster, probably.
So David, two things. First, we know that the Lexington bylaw apparently passed approval from the Attorney General's office. So you can just get a copy of that and do a search and replace Medfield for Lexington if you wanted to, and you'd have a starting place, if you wanted to do a citizen petition. Secondly.
For that purpose, to do what Lexington did, though.
Secondly, I'm fascinated that you have solar shingles on your house. I'm going to drive by your house now, and you should be doing a presentation for, for Sustainable Medfield about your shingles.
No, they're, they're great.
I thought they weren't ready for, for Massachusetts winters. I'm glad to hear that they are, so, good.
It just lies right off.
Good.
Got a box of shrubbery in there.
Or small dogs.
Yeah.
Or your deck. Does that, that at least help push this forward?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, well, thanks for coming.
Interesting issue.
Okay, uh, let's see, the next thing that we have was, it said Chief Garrett, but I take it it's Deputy Chief Anderson to request the Board of Selectmen appoint John Plant as a full-time police officer, and to request the Board of Selectmen to sign two grant applications.
Okay, good evening. Thanks for having me. I know we've been here a while, so I'll be fast. Three things. So I'm here to respectfully ask the board to approve the appointment of John Plant. Who, John, we got off the list, I'll tell you 27 years in a, in a couple of minutes about John. So John was a 2014 graduate of Abington High School. He then went and served three years in the US Army. He's currently finishing up his master's degree right now at SNHU with two semesters left. He comes highly recommended to us. From his background, he is described as a great mentor, friend, and an employee. I spent some time with him today, remarkable young man, that already had, he's already academy-trained, so he'll be an asset to Medfield on day one. So John has, lastly about John, he's worked as a corrections officer at Norfolk County Sheriff. He has been a dispatcher and a police officer. So again, he'll be able to step right in on day one after a couple of weeks of a field training program.
Does he live nearby?
Uh, he lives in Whitman.
I don't know where that is, so that can't be nearby.
Right. Whitman is, yeah, down towards the south shore.
Hudson-Whitman, is all I know. On the other side of Brockton.
That's right, that's right. That's good, I'm, I'm thrilled. I know the chief had mentioned that she had a couple of new recruits, so that's, that's excellent.
Yep, yep, he'll be, be able to slide right in. We could use him.
Yes.
He's starting right away?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Great, okay.
Do that tomorrow.
Okay. You mean tonight, everything goes well?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, and this is just, just maybe.
Yep, that's just the.
All right, works for me.
Motion?
Move to appoint John Plant as a full-time police officer under, and, yes, that's it.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Perfect.
Carries. You want it right now?
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, keep, keep going, I'll sign this one while you're.
Okay. Secondly, we have a couple of grants for, for approval. The first one is the State 911 Training Grant. I'll give you a little history of that, we've done that handful of years now. I know the last three I've written it. So we cross-train all of our dispatches for emergency medical dispatch, and the patrol officers, supervisors, everybody's, all has that same training. We do that just in case somebody has to leave, you know, for whatever reason, and we have somebody that can step in. So that, that's a reimbursement for that EMD grant. So it's, I think it's listed at 21108, but it can, you know, as new guys get hired, John will, he'll obviously be able to add, be added to that grant. So we just have to, we do, everybody that's currently certified has 16 hours of continuing ed every year that they have to complete. New employees that don't have any dispatching experience, it's an 80-hour for the different programs they need. So it's a huge help, too, because they'll pay if it's on overtime or straight time, the reimbursement will cover either, so it's a big help.
This is dispatch, that first grant is, it is dispatch training?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, emergency medical dispatch.
Right, okay.
I know, I read through, it's pretty straightforward.
Any questions, Pete?
Oh, no.
I didn't have any questions. The only thing I'd point out is that the first grant, I think, required notarized signatures from both me and you. So just this, this one's signed already, but that one will be a little more. The second grant, though, I don't think had that same notification, so, okay. So tell us about the.
The second grant is just a, it's reimbursement also for the Bridge Academy. So the Bridge Academy is for officers that had, they didn't have the full-time academy, they have either a state special or a reserve intermittent academy. The bridge is just like the name entails, it's just the kind of bridge so that everybody has the same training, whether they went to a full-time one or to a part-time. So that's, we've had two officers complete that training already, Officer Hamano and Officer Cronin. So it's over a three-year window, and it depends on your last name. So I believe the first year was A to H, and then I to, let me see, I did write it down. A to H, I to P, and then Q to Z. So you'll notice on that form, it's a 2022 fiscal year. They said that's fine, don't worry about it, the, the new one isn't out yet. So I don't know, I'm guessing by '23 or '24 it should be done, but they said that they'll accept the, the '22 until that one's out.
So this grant is a reimbursement for Cronin and Hamano?
Yes, for, for what we've already invested in those other two offices.
So that's $6,000 total, $3,000 each.
Again, pretty straightforward.
Oh, no questions.
You answered my question, so I guess we have one motion to approve both of those grant applications?
So moved.
Second.
So you got all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, so motion carries. We're all set. The only thing is, I can't get you the signature right away on that first grant, at least, so. Okay, so we'll have those ready. That one's signed.
I'll take this one.
That was the part of Fall Goes Well, right?
Strict instructions from the chief that you were to lead with that.
Thank you so much. Good seeing you.
Thanks, Lars.
Have a good night, thank you.
All right. Let's see, discussion item, I don't think we're ready for a potential vote here, but it was, it was listed in the agenda as the BOS FY23 goals. I actually would point out, it's the town goals, not the BOS's goals that we're dealing with here. I sent an email, or a, a copy of this updated file out to you and Pete, but it wasn't until like 4:30 this afternoon. So if you didn't see it, that's quite understandable. Pete, I don't know if you saw.
No.
So what I'm going to do then is I'm going to give you, I have two copies that I'm just going to give to you.
I didn't even see if they're, oh, did you send it to my e-Murphy?
You're at Medfield.
Yeah, I didn't get it.
Okay, well.
And if you sent it, I, I go from 12 to 5.
I'll give it to anyone.
I didn't get it either.
Let's see if you're in my spam, I never thought of that. Let's see if we're, oh, let's see if you're junk. Nope, you're not junk, you're not there.
All right, well then, here's two hard copies. What I, what I did, and I explained in the email, so at some point you should get it. In the last meeting that we had, I said I would take the lead for updating this, this sheet from where we had it before, because we had certain things that were identified as being completed. So what I've done in the first five of these goal areas, which are the ones that we've always had, is I dropped, or I deleted the completed.
What was in green?
The green.
Yeah.
I, and everything else I kept, the only thing is, I monkeyed around a little bit with the alignment of, it was, I think I actually should just redo the entire thing over as a Word document, because it's been a Word document, there was a PDF that was converted back to Word. So I have these floating windows that are rather mysterious, actually, if you come right down to it. Nonetheless, what you have here is, for the first five areas, is the up, just the mechanical update that deleted all of the completed goals and left everything else that I had done there.
Yep.
Some of the things that I did, I actually asked a question, and we haven't had that discussion about, you know, you, you two haven't weighed in one way or the other on my question, so I didn't want to unilaterally do stuff. And to be honest, I haven't actually stepped back and said, are there goals we should add, other than the ones that I thought of here? And you haven't added any goals. So on the first five, the real question is, what should our goals be? And this is really kind of a broader question for the two of you on what changes or what additions, what answers to my questions. Do you think we should put in for our next update on this?
So I think we should give, we should, Pete, I'll at least speak for myself. I think via the December 20th meeting, we should answer your questions on this.
That would, yeah.
So that when we go into January, even though I know our fiscal year's already in, that we, because I was just saying to Christine, like, you know, elections are going to be around the corner, it should be locked and loaded.
Right. The, the sixth area is the environmental area that Hilly originally had suggested we add.
Yep.
We decided we'd do it. Originally, we asked the Energy Committee to come in with a draft of that goal area. And at the time that I asked them, I said, but don't make it just an Energy Committee Net Zero. And they did, that's the thing that they're focused on, so that came in. I have, in the sixth area, I took a crack at the, at the high-level strategic goal.
Yep.
Those, those top level, everything in blue is draft, and it's stuff that I wrote. The thing at the top was an articulation of the broad goal, that's kind of like an everlasting goal that describes the area. I only did the first two columns around the fundamental, the, the first column is the focus area. So if you think about what should the environment, how should we be thinking about our environmental goals in town? That was a crack that I took at doing that. The next one over is the long-term goals, and even there, I didn't overthink it. I just, I put down some starting thoughts about what those goals would be. I have some ideas about what the detailed goals should be, but I didn't want to put them in, because if you all think differently about what the starting framework is, then either the goals don't fit at all, or they fit in a different way than I probably would have put them in, so. And I actually think we all should be thinking about what those goals are, anyway.
Yes.
So my, my intention was to, this is in case anybody from the Energy Committee is listening, my intention was to try to take a look at what the, some of, at least what some of the high-level thinking was that Hilly set back around the Climate Action Plan Net Zero intent. And I never, and I didn't worry about the detailed actions. So I think, you know, those I think are going to require some, some thought and some discussion about what constitutes an action that's like a true goal action versus a step. But that, that's where I did, I just didn't want to push that too far ahead. So that's where it's at right now. Basically, getting your ideas on the first five areas with an intention of final, of updating the, the actions, and then getting a broader level reaction to that sixth area that I just took, I just took a first draft at. Is there any questions, or?
Pete, are you game for trying to get feedback by the 20, the 12?
By the 20th?
12/20, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
And I, I am sensitive to, these always get referred to as the BOS goals.
Right.
The intention was always that it was the town goals. And there, oftentimes, many of the specific goals that we put in there, the BOS definitely has an important role in, but not all of them.
Right.
Some of those goals, it's been the town planner has, has been responsible for them. So I don't want to, I, I think, it's not that I want us to tell the town what the town goals are, it's that I would like the town to see this document as an articulation of town goals. So if they think something, kind of like what Hilly did. They looked at what we had, and she came in and said, you know, we need a sixth area that deals with the environment. And my first thought was, no, we, we have that. And then it's like, no, we don't. We have, we talked about community, you know, community culture and preservation of history, but she was right, we didn't have that. So that's, you know, that's how, this was intended to be a living document that would give people a way to talk about what we're trying to accomplish. give people a way to talk about what we're trying to accomplish, and that perhaps would guide the thinking of the town. Should we go ahead?
Good, I think it's good to bring, just to highlight it, so people do realize that we have it, and then next year, we go to review, and if somebody believes we're missing something, then bring it forward.
Right, right. Okay, so that's...
Just to start out with, looks like there's a type over for proposals.
Yeah, you know what that is, is I did a conversion, I have, I have a conversion program that does that in...
The only thing I would mention is this yellow type is annoying.
I probably did that to annoy people. Let's see...
It works, it's, it's hard to read, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I, I'm more happy, there are other colors to choose from here. I think the reason, well, I'd have to, I can't read it, it's a yellow...
Well, it makes sense, red, yellow, blue, I mean, red, red, green, yellow, like, green we can go, yellow is a pause, and red's a...
I think that was the thought, but I agree with Pete, I, I need better glasses to see what that thing says, so, so noted.
Thank you for doing that.
Well, yeah, it's a, it's a worthwhile document if we can keep it up. Okay, from there, item three on the agenda, action items, accept the resignation of George Darrell from the Conservation Commission. He submitted a letter.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. And we appreciate his service. Next, vote to sign the contract with Environmental Partners for annual landfill monitoring and reporting for thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars. As I recall, we had the original contract two meetings ago, we had Attachment A one meeting ago, and now we have the original contract and Attachment A. Is that correct? The correct Attachment A, which said, and I did check, and the twenty-twenty-twos have become twenty-twenty-threes.
Yeah.
And I assume there's nothing significant that changed from the original contract that I did take the time to read two meetings ago.
No.
Okay. Any questions?
I would move to sign the contract with Environmental Partners for the annual landfill monitoring and reporting.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. And if anybody out there is curious, the value of that contract was thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars.
Chris, are we, are we gonna get an answer sometime about the landfill for purposes of putting a solar array there?
Yes, we're working with our environmental consultant to determine if DEP will consider the landfill to be deemed closed, and if not, what work we'll have to do in order to bring it to that.
Yeah, when do you expect to have an answer for it?
I don't have it, I don't know.
Yeah, is it like a year or two years, or...
I think it's probably at least a one or two-year process.
Okay.
Next item, vote, oops, you good? Yes, I thought you were, I thought you were still...
No, I was saying, thank you.
Vote to sign the two, two roof solar array leases at the Kingsbury Club as the town of Medfield as the ground lessor. Oh, yeah, you have to read, you use yourself.
Actually, don't, don't leave, we're actually removing these. Based on Town Council's review, we are removing these, correct? They no longer need our signature?
We got a, an email from their attorney saying, thanks, but never mind, we don't, we determined we don't need the town's signatures any longer, so...
Okay.
Okay. I'm glad we didn't sign it at the last meeting.
Can they explain why there was no signature block for us?
Well, on the first one, there was, yeah, the first one had it, the second one didn't. Okay, next item, vote to sign letter of support for the Cultural Alliance of Medfield grant application to save America's treasures for preservation funding.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed.
Thanks, Gene.
Gene was there if we had any questions.
It was a, it was a short letter for anyone who, the public who's curious, this is basically the town showing support for a grant that Cultural Alliance of Medfield applied for, and in terms of any commitments that the Board of Selectmen made, the commitment I think we made with regard to the chapel and the infirmary is we were committed to ensuring, into pursuing its historic preservation, so that was a pretty easy lift to go along with. Next item, vote to sign the notice of consent to assignment of interconnection service agreement and assignment and assumption agreement for the DPW solar project. Were there two, or those are two different, there's two different documents, so when I, that wasn't one long title, that was the interconnection service agreement and the assignment and assumption agreement for the DPW solar project. And I believe if I followed this correctly, this is because those are PPA projects, and basically, this is sort of legally granting...
Well, I, I take it that when this project was initiated, the town entered into arrangements with Eversource, and now because we're proceeding the way we are, the solar contractor needs to have those rights, so it's an assignment.
That's kinda what I was trying to say, yeah, okay. Again, so if anybody out there is wondering what the heck this is about, you can correct me if I, if I simply, if my simple explanation is wrong, Mark. Basically, the town had an agreement with Eversource, which is this, which basically sets out the provisions by which the town's solar array will interconnect with the Eversource system, and there's a set of agreements on how that works that protects everybody's interest. The town has decided to use a PPA, PPA as something provider, preferred, it's not preferred, private power? Basically, we've, we've determined that we will allow that solar array to be built by a private developer, rather than at town expense, we negotiate an agreement with that developer to basically get a benefit from the operation of that provider's solar arrays that are on the DPW garage, but in order to do that, we have to...
Power purchase agreement.
Power purchase agreement, I should have known that. In order to do that, we have to transfer the agreements that we struck with Eversource for our solar installation, transfer that to the PPA who's actually putting up the installation, so that's what these two agreements are all about. And that's, yeah, it's select...
Solelect.
Solelect, select. Okay?
Yeah.
Motion.
Vote to sign both the notice of consent to assignment of interconnection service agreement and assignment and assumption agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Next, vote to accept the quote from ENE Systems for security card access for the townhouse for twenty-five thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars. And I would point out, that amount includes a hundred fifty dollars a year for the service agreement, which seemed like an eminently reasonable service, recurring service charge.
Correct, and this was a capital project that was approved in April, actually, April and June, June of twenty twenty, in the county.
Really?
So, questions?
So, just basically...
Go to a key fob system.
Key, okay, so, all right, perfect.
So we're getting rid of our...
Manual keys, okay.
Pete, questions?
No.
So my only one is, did the selectman get keys? Yeah, we, so we do, yes. Because I'm not voting, I'm not voting for this if I can't get into this building. All right, okay.
You have to trade your badge in for it?
We'll actually be able to open it remotely for you if necessary.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Second, our next item is vote to accept the quote from ENE Systems to upgrade the security... Wait a minute.
Public safety.
This one's the public safety.
Yeah, but the document that was in here was the video...
It's, it's video at security, yeah.
So this, the thing that, the thing in the packet is in fact what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
We consider this very system to be the video system.
Okay, got it. So vote to accept the quote from ENE Systems to upgrade the security system at the public safety building for forty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed.
And that was a project from twenty twenty-two, if anybody was interested, and both of those came from the municipal building stabilization.
Great, okay. Then the consent agenda, we have four items, Medfield Lions request for a one-day all liquor license for their senior holiday luncheon to be held on Sunday, December eleventh, from twelve PM to two PM. Medfield Lions request to place sandwich boards in the usual locations advertising the Lions Club Christmas tree sales beginning November twenty-sixth. Boy Scout Troop Eighty-Nine requests to place signs announcing the annual Christmas tree pickup and recycling program at the intersection of North Main Street and northeast corner of Route Twenty-Seven and South Street. And the Memorial School requests to place a sign on Main Street from January third to January seventeenth, advertising the opening of kindergarten registration. Any discussion?
Nope, pretty straightforward.
Motion.
I would move the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Approved.
Wow, we're gonna do that.
Oh, meeting minutes, I totally slipped up on that, so we'll defer.
I gave my feedback to Brittany.
Okay.
Whoever did it did a good job, there's a, that was a very lengthy discussion, and...
That was a very lengthy meeting.
And, but it's worth, it is worth, there's a couple of words that like, that were, got flip-flopped, that I was a little bit concerned with, because I'm like, if someone was to read that a year from now, they'd be like, oh, but this is what you said, and it's like, ooh.
Probably have to review.
Okay, well, we'll defer that.
We'll, we'll...
My apologies for, I, you know, I talked myself out of doing it when Brittany first sent it out like a week and a half ago, I said, I should just jump on that. Ah, you've got plenty of time. And then I completely just skipped it. Town administrator update?
Just a couple of things, I want to let everybody know, just thank Gene actually for, and everybody who volunteered, what a great time the holiday stroll was on Friday night, and I know the mild weather really helped people come out, but it was so nice to walk down the street and see that many people out and about for that many hours, really, really great. And it's just, it's one of those events, you know, similar to Medfield Day, it's just, it's just so Medfield, and I love it. I love it. And the other thing is, I'm very happy to announce that Sarah Hannigan, volunteer coordinator at the Council on Aging, has been promoted to the Council on Aging Director. She'll have a month, obviously, overlapping with Roberta, and she'll begin officially beginning of January. So, very happy to have her as part of the team. That's all I have this evening.
All right, so I had a chance to go to the pizza party that was hosted on Wednesday before Thanksgiving, huge turnout that I happened to bump into Rick a few days later, but he said well over three hundred kids. The running joke when I was there is the pizza pile stack was about this high, and it tallied over fifty at the end. He was gonna get a picture of like, how, like, put a human next to the pile of pizzas, but it was really nice, it was just so nice to see, again, the families, the young kids, kudos to him and his whole crew that supported that. And then the, the park naming, where are we, that, that should have closed, what, December second?
I don't know, I'll have to talk to Rick, I know we have the box in the, on the ground floor of the townhouse, so I'll have to go check with him.
Okay. And then I had a chance to go to two Eagle Scout ceremonies, the first one was with Troop Ten for the first female Eagle Scout, Madeline Rothstein, and then the weekend after Thanksgiving, went to Eagle Scout Eighty, Troop Eighty-Nine for Hayden Gray, William Whittaker, and Joshua Lozano. That was, I, you know, I was saying this to you at the event, I hadn't been to Troop Eighty-Nine, so it was, the ceremonies were different, and really, I liked seeing that the, the diverse ceremonies, it was nice. And then I, we had an Affordable Housing Trust meeting last week, and we talked about the, we're looking for land, town-owned land, or land that someone could then deed to the Affordable Housing Trust for both Habitat for Humanity as well as group home, and there's still lots of the discussion about what could potentially happen up at the State Hospital with the land that still exists, but I really like the direction they're going, and I know Newton had a chance to kind of summarize, they got, I believe, the survey that was, what was put out there for the families that could inquire about the group house. I want to say, don't hold me to this, but I think it was like seventy-eight responses, or seventy-two responses, and of that, I want to say roughly, I think thirty-six provided their email, so kudos to, to Newton and that team to, to, it's an important, it's an important topic, and I, I hope that we're able to find land for both Habitat for Humanity and the group home. And then I was able to attend the Open Space Recreation Forum on Monday night, I enjoyed that. Both the holiday stroll, which was great, the tree lighting was unbelievable turnout, there were a huge crowd, loved seeing the young families, and then saw many of those same young families for the Angel Run on Sunday. That, that is probably my favorite event, I just, it's such a hoop to see all the different age groups running, walking, the signs along the way, the spirit of all the neighbors that come up to the end of the driveways, just fantastic, so kudos to Medfield Foundation and all that. And I think that is that.
I've been following Eileen around at the, at the Eagle Scout ceremonies and at the holiday stroll and the Angel Run, and I would just add that at the first Eagle Scout ceremony for Madeline Rothstein, the first woman to get an Eagle Scout in Medfield, our new state Senator Becker Rousch was there, so that was nice to see her appear. I had some office hours, the first Friday of every month at the center, from nine to ten, I have office hours. And I did go to the Open Space Forum last night as well. And lastly, I would just mention that the, we got a very nice complimentary letter from Caroline Abernathy about the club that the Council on Aging runs for respite care, and Caroline talked about how much, how much her husband liked it, and how much it meant to her and her family that Medfield provided that service, and so I'm just, I'm glad to, Roberta fought really hard to get that service going, and it's nice to see it, so appreciated. And that's it.
I think we probably have been doing many of the similar things here, I was at the holiday stroll, but I missed you guys because you were somewhere, I think at seven, and we didn't get there, or...
Yeah, across.
Or at six, and we got there at six-thirty, so my wife works a little bit late, and most of the day she works, she's worked a little late. And I also was at the Troop Eighty-Nine Court of Honor, I also listened in on the Open Space meeting, was interested to see how that conversation went. Happy, the other thing that I don't think, unless it got mentioned at the tail end, I wasn't sure that I heard any mention made of the fact that the current draft plan needs to be finalized by the end of June, so I was, the project management consultant in me was hoping that that's...
I can't remember if Jerry said it or not, I'm not sure.
I don't know if he said it, but I know that Sarah and I have been talking about that.
It's in the chart, it's in the charter of the committee, so it's a very clear deadline.
They're issuing for that fact, they gave me a list of items that they would like me to have done a while ago, so I have to...
Okay. And then the, just as sort of a casual aside, I had a, had a nice lunch meeting with Jim Nail and Stephen Brown on the topic of district energy, and obviously, they're, they will be happy to help in the State Hospital redevelopment, if they can be of help to promote that. The one thing that came out of that meeting that I did find interesting was that Stephen had said that there are some recent changes to the laws that have opened up some new potential, like tax credit type opportunity incentives to do things. And according to Stephen, he said that these are, these laws are so new that the implementation guidelines haven't even really come out yet, but he, he works for a company that puts some of these things together, so he has some expertise there. You know, to the extent that the town, without interfering with the Trinity's efforts to develop its own project, to the extent that the town can provide a source of ideas, for one thing, I think that's a good thing to let Trinity know, we're trying to figure out how to make sure their project is successful, and we have some people in town that have some good expertise that, you know, under the, in the right way, if we present ideas the right way, I'm optimistic that that could be a very positive thing all around, and could lead to an even better project than I think we're going to see, so. I enjoyed the conversation, and they were the ones that suggested it, and I appreciate that they prompted it, because it was actually an educational...
Gil Rogers prepared just a remarkably excellent case study for the district geothermal systems, and it was fascinating to hear that they've been around since the seventies, and that the, the Elder Care CCRC over in Newbridge on the Charles apparently has one that's, would be similar in size to the one at the State Hospital, so, yeah, I think that they can, they can, I mean, that's, I mean, Jim Nail's working on the Energy Committee, I was gonna show you, Gus, this is the agenda for the upcoming Energy Committee meeting, you'll appreciate this, I think.
You think we have log meetings?
New standard.
Just turn it into a competition, because I can, I can try harder.
I was on record to get you out at nine, so...
I know, I have a minute, I have a minute, we can discuss lengthening... I know. I have a minute. I have a minute. We can discuss lengthening the, extending the Selectmen's meeting. Anyway, those are, I think, the main points. Hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. Yes.
I just have an informational item. So you were on distribution for the memo from the town and the PIP group regarding the activity and use limitation up at the hospital, so.
Is there a little more information?
No, it isn't. No, I just, I just want to say that the letter addressed some issues that we had in terms of defining the actual maintenance that need to be required and the frequency in the maintenance, that didn't look like it was going to make it into the activity and use limitation, and we're gonna discuss it later. I just want to say that the activity and use limitation was filed on December 2nd. So it's there. So our next action item, or whatever it's going to be, to have that discussion, to try to pin down exactly what the maintenance is and the frequency for it, just so you know.
Okay, thank you. That's the email you sent. So I haven't read the attachment yet, Bill. Okay. I don't think.
Parade coming up this Saturday. You guys gunning up?
Right.
We're all carrying you, Gus.
Huh? I thought that was the deal. It was if I, Pete, Pete, this was Pete's idea. I didn't, I didn't ask for this. Pete suggested that the two, that the two of you, that the chair of the Board of Selectmen should be in the middle. And we were talking about means of transportation, and determined we weren't gonna get the golf cart. And I said, I think it would be entirely appropriate for Eileen and Pete to carry me in a fireman's carry. I'd be more than happy to be in the center of that.
Pete, I can put him in the wagon I had ruined this past weekend.
I actually think that carrying you, Gus, will interfere with my drum line that I'm executing at the parade. The select word drum line.
Here, I was, I was so psyched.
My hands will be occupied.
I was gonna be able to, I was gonna be able to hold the banner, go Army, beat Navy. They are playing on Saturday, undoubtedly right around the time of the parade, but we'll, we'll see. It could be, I haven't, I haven't seen it time yet.
Well, you can stream it on your phone.
Yeah, it's not the same.
I wasn't gonna go there.
Yes. All right. Well, I've managed to push this past 9:00, so I feel like I've done my job. Do we have a, is there any other, are there any other items we need to discuss?
Nope.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Have a good night, everyone.